Madam Clerk, would you call role, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Combs? Mr. Hinche? Mr. Hinche? Mr. Luther? Ms. Nelson?
Present.
Ms. Reclu? Ms. Sebacher?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Present.
Mr. Washington?
Here.
Seven council members present.
Thank you. Reverend, will you? Any implication, please?
Dear Lord, we're going to begin just a little different tonight. This is the first session of the new year. And we give you thanks, Lord, for your leadership through a very cold and difficult time in the last two weeks. But we've moderated, Lord, and things are much better today, and for this, we give you praise. We want to thank you, Lord, for Mr. Stubblefield's service to our city. We're grateful, Lord, for the years he committed to us in helping us move forward as a community, and we pray for a happy, healthy retirement for him. And I want to remember, Lord, tonight, the life and legacy of Jack McBride. He has done as much for this community and the wider radius and area as anyone else in the kingdom. I want to pray for his family tonight and for the memories that bind us together through his work, dedication, and service on behalf of humankind throughout our area and further beyond. I want to thank you, Lord, for seeing this council into a new year. I pray for them and our mayor, all of our department heads, and all the folks on the ground every day that keep our city moving forward. On this night especially do I pray for the danger on our streets and highways, especially in low-lying areas. I pray for our police officers and firefighters and all first responders and law enforcement at every level. This fog is going to be overwhelming clear up into the day tomorrow. And I pray for the traveling public tonight and for all of those who patrol our streets and highways to keep them and us safe. Please bless them all. I pray for this session. I ask you, Lord, to bless any discussions that are held, any decisions that are made, that first they be pleasing to you. I thank you, Lord, for this great country that is ours and for this community that is its portion and for all who lead us, keep us safe, protect our Constitution and our flag at home and around the world. God bless our troops and their vigilance for liberty. I pray finally, Lord, tonight, for anyone within the city family who would need your touch. Anyone, anywhere, any need. I see Mrs. Reclu is not in chamber tonight or wasn't when I began to pray. I pray that you keep her stable, lifted up, and encouraged each day. And for all those that we love, be that light and hope that we so need. Bless us all until we meet again, we pray through Christ our Lord. Amen. Face the flag. Attention, salute, and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Praise the Lord.
Okay, and do we have any comments from visitors? Seeing none, we'll move on. Uh, we have a proclamation tonight. Darryl, you want to come up too? Okay, Craig, um, I give you this proclamation on behalf of the City of Fulton, the citizens of Fulton. It says, "Whereas, on the occasion of the retirement of Craig Stubblefield from the employment of the City of Fulton, after nineteen years, one month, and eleven days, it is proper that the city record an expression of its appreciation of his exemplary service as an employee of the City of Fulton. And whereas Craig has served the City of Fulton, Missouri, commencing on November the twenty-second, two thousand and four, as an apprentice power plant operator, from which he graduated to power plant operator in November of, uh, two, uh, twenty oh seven, and then his final promotion to assistant power plant supervisor on January first, two thousand and twelve. And whereas the performance of his duties and responsibilities and his working relationships were characterized by knowledge and dedication to his field, and now therefore I, Steve Myers, Mayor of the City of Fulton, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of our community, extend our sincere appreciation and heartfelt congratulations to Craig for these many years of service to our community and wish him only the best in his future endeavors." Craig, I'm going to give you this. And Darryl? You're going to present the, you're going to present the card?
We're going to talk some more first, though. Y'all might as well sit down. We're going to talk a little bit. You know, we, we've got a lot of retirement cards signed over the years, but since Craig worked with everybody, I mean, he was the guy calling you out at night on slick roads and all that. There's his card. That's how much people think of Craig. And Craig's one of them guys that if he was doing his job right, you didn't know he was doing it. Craig would set up switching orders and switch us from Columbia over to the backup to Central back. And if Craig did everything right, nobody ever knew we do it, did it. He did the waters the same way. He'd start pumps, stop pumps. He would call, he would check on people. He's one of those guys that if he did his job, you didn't know he was doing it. But also, we had a monthly call with T E A yesterday talking about the cold weather and all that. And T E A said Fulton's power schedulers is one of the best ones of the whole event. How close they got Fulton's electric load to what it actually was on the schedule. And Craig is the one that trained everyone of them guys. Thank you. You was always there and we needed you. We didn't have to call you. You just was there. Nope, go ahead.
Darryl's right. I mean, Craig, I mean, when I, when I first got here a few years back, they, um, you know, I didn't even realize we had a power plant. And then, uh, all of a sudden, I end up at the power plant and I started learning all the different things that they do. And, um, at the time, we were getting, we were implementing a, a new system that monitored all our, all of our, uh, water wells and electric substations and everything utilities it monitors. And, uh, and I was helping, helping the person kind of roll that out. And Craig was like, "That alarm's wrong." I'm like, "No, that we had the..." And sure enough, he'd be right. He's like, "Oh, and this one's wrong and that one's wrong." I'm not sure we ever got them all, all fixed. But, 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 uh, just the amount of knowledge that, that Craig carried with him, not only what he does, but what he learned, uh, with other people's jobs because of the call, all, like, like Darrell said, all the, all the calls come in to the power plant, you know, when it's not regular, normal business time. So, um, he learned, learned a lot and he's got a ton, a ton of respect from everybody. I mean, just immense respect. So anyways, congratulations, buddy.
Thank you all. Appreciate it. Learned a lot from all the city and a lot of good employees. A lot of good management, too. Thank you all. Okay, thank you all. Appreciate it.
Another good one bites the dust. He was outstanding. Okay. Next, we'll have the approval of the, uh, consent agenda. Does anybody want to pull anything off there? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Second.
Anything you want to discuss? Seeing none, we have a motion in second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Uh, everybody had a chance to read the, uh, D O A report for December. Do we have any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the D O A report.
Very good. We have a motion in second to approve the D O A report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Presentation and acceptance of the financial statement?
Dustin Doherty, Fulton CFO. The City of Fulton reported eleven months of sales tax in two thousand and twenty-three. Elections are down one point seven percent from fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, use tax is up thirty-four point seven percent from two thousand and twenty-two. December was a three payroll month, so, uh, you'll find the expenses are proportionally higher. Um, we also approved back some wages paid in January for December back to two thousand and twenty-three as well. Um, did you have any questions in the financial report?
I do.
Sure.
On page three, and this is probably just my ignorance, so forgive me. Um, looking under the enterprise funds for the solid waste department, the administration line is at three hundred and thirty point zero nine percent. Can you talk to me about that?
Um, so I did make some notes here. Um, I talked to some people. The problem is I don't know why it was budgeted so low. Um, when I looked at it, it looks like, um, the expenses were in line with the prior year, which is odd. So two thousand and twenty-three was in line with two thousand and twenty-one. So I'm not sure why it was budgeted so low. That's, I guess, not really a good answer. I'm not sure, looking at the, uh, personnel in that, the number of personnel didn't, didn't increase or anything, so I'm not sure.
So that was going to be my next question. Administration is covering, which is personnel costs?
Personnel, uh, mainly.
Okay. Okay, but it's in an enterprise fund. So can you explain that to me?
Um, what an enterprise fund is?
Well, I was under the impression that that was a fund that was used to sort of finance other projects, an enterprise fund typically. So money would be placed there that was earmarked for something else and then paid back. So I don't, I personally don't understand how payroll can be considered an enterprise fund.
Um, so the enterprise fund is, so there's different types of funds. There's governmental funds, then there's business-type funds, and then there's enterprises of business-type funds. Um, and so that just means that it's, the majority of its income is, uh, user charges. So that would be like the water fund, um, solid waste, um, gas fund, electric fund.
So it would be in addition to those other departments? So considerably over budgeted. But you think because it was under budgeted, that's why it looked that way? Because this is as of October thirty-first, so there's going to be two additional months on top of that.
The, uh, I didn't, I couldn't figure out in your, because you mailed me some questions. And I was like, well, it's for December, I'm not sure. But then I realized the header, so I, I printed this from Excel. There's the header was hidden, so I printed and said, "We're good to go. All my numbers are right." But then I missed, then it says October thirty-first. So it is December thirty-first.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Well, that makes a lot more sense. But it's still way over budgeted. So you think that was just an accounting error?
I think it was a budgeting error, to be honest.
Really?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Is that something that we've addressed in this current budget then? And made adjustments?
Yes, I, I think looking at this year's budget, I'm pretty sure it was pretty close to what was in line with two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay. There were several that were over.
Yes.
And that's to be expected. I think there's, obviously, there's going to be margin of error, but that one was just exceptional. So obviously a concern. Um, I think that was it. The other questions I hadn't answered in the email, so.
Sure.
I think I'm good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I just want to add in a comment too on, on this budget. I've had just a little time to look through it and everything. This is outstanding. It's, it, it looks so professional and so well done.
Thank you.
Miss Spoke?
Sure.
On page four, uh, debt service and special funds. Was that another one under the police special revenue fund, around a thousand percent?
Yeah, and essentially on that one, it looks like we didn't budget any expenses at all. So I'm not sure. Um, so for this, it's kind of like that fund is, you have to have pre-authorization to spend the funds. So I, I'm not sure why they didn't just put a placeholder in there in the budget, because that's what I did for two thousand and twenty-four is put in the
Yes.
Oppose? Motion passes. Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
Okay, we do not have unfinished business or new business. So we'll move to council concerns. Councilman Henchy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to reiterate again that this adopted budget, this plan, really looks good and well done. Good job on that. Also like to extend a well done to our forces, the police force and the fire department during this weather. You've done an outstanding job of taking care of the public. And to Daryl Dunlap and his crew for the utilities and how they've made us through this, this cold snap. It was outstanding work. And I have no, anything else, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Sabacher?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. No concerns really, just another compliment. I appreciate so very much all the work that everyone does for the Christmas season and our field of joy. I know a lot of folks got a lot of pride and a lot of joy out of that, so I wanted to thank you for that. I was down there several times with my kiddos and we absolutely loved it. So thank you all for doing that. And no, like I said, no concerns. And we have not had a public Thanksgiving commission, so can you get that ready to start?
Councilman Stone?
Yes, Historic Preservation Commission met last week. Quite a few things on the agenda I was not able to attend, but one of the significant items that came, that was brought before that meeting is at the Middle River School, one of our one-room schoolhouses that we still have standing in the county. And, and it's one of the ones that was highlighted in the Historic, Historical Society's book that was released this year, is on its way to application for National Register for Historic Places. The application was completed and submitted, and it is now at the Missouri Historic Preservation Office. And then we'll go through there on the National Register application process. So it's nice to see that those that have spent the last, you know, 7,500 years preserving that, that building is going to get some recognition for all of that hard work. And then just the other comment, just partly personal, I appreciate those that have reached out. Well, we've been going everything, going through everything with my wife. She continues to recover small victories every day. We got out of the house for the very first time today since she came home last week to go to doctor's appointment. And even with the fog, we were able to make it back completely uneventful. But thanks for those that have been reaching out and anyone that's interested, just reach directly out to Teresa. She, she loves hearing from folks. And thank you.
Good. I'm glad, certainly glad to hear she's doing better. I know she was in all of our prayers. Councilman Luther?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There has been no Airport Advisory Board meeting since our last council meeting. As far as concerns, I'd say aye, we should always, all have a health concern on safety. But I do want to praise that with the behaviors around the city with this recent ice storm. Courtney, Mr. Mayor and the leadership team, it's not an easy decision to shut down. Let's say that the city administration faced unsafety, but the decision was made. I know that decision also went beyond the city and went to many businesses. But I do appreciate that leadership, that behavior, showing that safety is a worthy priority. If you continue to express our appreciation to our fellow employees, that if there is an unsafe issue, make sure to bring that up and continue to just kind of keep it a safety priority. Again, Daryl's appreciation for the Hot and Warm Utilities. It looks like very good work throughout this ice storm, especially through storms in the past. It sounds like, looks like we've done our diligence to really make our utilities more robust throughout these types of storms. And appreciation for everybody else that's staying safe out there.
Thank you. I think that was a very wise decision, and I know some of the businesses, because we shut down, they also followed suit. They, we kind of led that charge, I think. And I think that was a very good move. Kept people off the roads and let our crews work a lot better with less traffic and so, yeah, thought it was good. Councilman Combs?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Plan and Zoning Commission did meet for their regular meeting tonight. We'll have a couple more properties that'll come before us. I'm assuming at the next meeting, seeing as they, they approved it tonight. To that, it did remind me that, I think at some point, we do need to have or request that they look at the comprehensive plan, because it's, I don't oppose anything that they're changing. It's just another one of those times in which we're being responsive versus proactive. And it just starts to create like a Swiss cheese type of approach to a plan, which I think we can just clean up some as we continue to go forward and have plenty of changes that can be made. Outside that, yeah, I echo the sentiments about closing yesterday. I agree that was great. I also really appreciate that we sent out emails. I didn't get a text necessarily from that system, but my wife did get a couple emails and she was commenting how helpful that is to get that. And so it's one way we have to directly communicate to people, whereas Facebook, we don't get to control who actually sees it. And the newspaper is very sparse in who actually gets to see that. That is a method that we can control that's for the most part free. And then my only other one, I was just thinking earlier, looking through the rest of this, through the announcements, noticing that we, I noticed this, I guess, a couple weeks ago too, when we had a holiday, that we're closing the Legends on holidays. I think it might be worth considering, at least looking at, if on not major holidays like Christmas and Thanksgiving, if we consider maybe keeping it open at least part of the day for those people or kids that are out of school or adults that can go work out during the day on those days. I'm sure there might be some part-time staff that would want to cover that and still be able to give full-time staff time off. Just an idea. But that's all I've got.
Actually, if I could follow up on what Alan brought up. So back on the zoning, a long-term plan, Alan has come up before. If you take action to get some work sessions, something in that works, some kind of making future for the government.
Okay. Councilman Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Park Board met this past, probably a couple of weeks ago. And Clay, we have Clay here. I came in a little bit later, but I heard some good things were taking place and, and they were talking about Carver Park, improvement in Carver Park, getting a grant, getting some money. And, and so, and also we were looking at signage, getting information out for the public, maybe possibly where to set up signs and things. These, some of these things were discussed. And not only that, I think they were looking at, I think it's called pickleball. Is that right? Pickleball, 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 trying to get a lead going and things like that. And that was discussed too. So we have Clay here. If he wants to, anything, he wants to highlight anything, I appreciate it. I know I probably missed something.
No, you've covered a lot of it. We had a, we had a large group of folks, probably 25 or 30 folks, that showed up to express interest in possibly developing an outdoor pickleball court. So we kind of listened to them. We asked a lot of questions. They gave us some good information. It's a growing trend across the country, but it is expensive to build outdoor courts. So we kind of got away the demand and the need for it versus the cost. So I think those would be ongoing discussions as we, as we move forward.
Thank you, Clay. I appreciate your leadership and you have a very involved Park Board, and I can see that, and they're really interested in this community and trying to improve it. So I appreciate knowing that too as well. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, on the other concern, the other thing that I want to bring light to is at one time, we were talking about a warming center whenever the, the weather gets to a certain point. This is probably about last year, we had that in part of our discussion. And, and I was glad to hear that. We had one of the establishments, someone here in this community had a warming center for the, for that cold weather that we had this past few days. And, and it seemed to, we had very good, we had a few good turnouts. We had some churches that participated in coverage of this, with this facility. So we were glad that that was happening here in Calaway, in Fulton. So want to thank the public for that too. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. We were concerned about warming centers. And if you look on the Calaway County Emergency website, I can't remember exactly where they are, but there's about eight or 10 on there that's in the city of Fulton, warming centers.
Good.
So we got a lot of the churches, senior center, I don't remember all of them, but yeah, there's, there's a number of warming centers that we have, yes.
Exactly. I'm glad that we have that here.
I was going out that we did partner, and I want to thank Chief Ladwig and the Fulton Police Department. They went by, what, every hour or so to, to just go and check and they helped move some supplies. And so we were happy to be able to partner and, and, you know, let the churches and volunteers that run those things incredibly well be able to provide some support to them. So thank you to you and your staff for doing that as well.
And I think we will be moving forward with the, am I correct, Clay? I know Clay, we talked about doing a public hearing for the basketball court in Carver Park. Councilman Nelson and I spoke with Reverend Jackson, and the public hearing can be at his church when, when he gets, when Clay gets it.
Yeah, I would just add that our next Park Board meeting is February 1st at 5:15. That's going to be one of the major topics of the discussion, Carver Park improvements, kind of developing a master plan or a long-term plan and getting citizen input as we move forward with that.
Thank you. With the Carver School project, which I think is going to be starting probably very shortly, we're going to have more people up there in that area, so we look, we're going to look at some improvements in that park.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I saw some people working in the building.
Yeah, Reverend Jackson told me that he thought it was going to start sometime in January, that project. Okay. Councilwoman Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, the Public Utility Board was not able to meet yesterday because of the weather. So we have not had a meeting since the last council session. I do want to reiterate the thanks I have for not only our police department and our fire department, but our street department, our trash department. All of our departments had a hand in the excellent communication and cleanup and everything that went into this week's, what could have been catastrophe. I know we've had a lot of weather that's affected us, so, gas department, everybody had a, everybody had a hand in that. So I just want to thank everybody within our city for all the things that they did and the communication that we had, the emails that went out. I think we handled that as well as we possibly could. So thank you on that. I would like to bring up possibly looking at the fence again or the splash pad. I know that that's been a topic at the Park Board meetings several times. I've had several people approach me about that with summer coming, thank goodness, warm temperatures. But just kind of looking into that again, I know that that has been discussed several times, but I would like to readdress that again, just because it is a topic of conversation and a lot of people would like to see us do something. As Mayor Meyer said, we have met with some people in the community regarding Carver Park. I'm really excited to see that project move forward and I encourage people to come out and give their opinions on that because it is a part of our community. And I would like us to start utilizing that park a lot more. And I don't have any concerns tonight.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Yeah, I think one, one thing that may limit us up there is we don't all own the ground that I thought we did up there. Harbison Walker owned some of it, and the parking lot, for instance, I don't think we own that. So we're going to have to check into that a lot closer and have maybe Kyle's people determine what we do own up there before we start building. Okay, I too want to, I know, I know most of you all know this. Our citizens certainly do not know, and all of our departments did a fantastic job in this cold weather. A couple stood out. Certainly Darrell did. His staff kept the lights on for us. I know I was up there with him at the power plant one, one day, one morning, and through the weekend, he monitored that, his people monitored our electric use and our gas use. We had, we had some challenges through those times and we were able to compensate for it. Darrell did an excellent job. Courtney did an excellent job in keeping us running and keeping people warm. So I want to commend both of you on the job you did and it was outstanding.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, I just wanted to add one thing. We weren't able to attend the dinner for the promotion of the three firefighters to their positions as lieutenant that took effect on January 15th. So I just wanted to say publicly, congratulations to them. And I really do hope that you get it rescheduled because I'd love to come and join you all. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
They're going to reschedule, I think. Okay. So, okay. Next, we'll move on to resolutions. Councilman Washington, would you read number of Resolution 3519-24? That's one we do every year from the police department.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 3519-24, local record disposition, a resolution authorizing the destruction of the city records that, that have met the retention requirements in accordance with the R S M, R S M O, Chapter 109, and the applicable state retention schedule. I make a, I make a motion to adopt Resolution number 3519-24 at this council meeting tonight.
Second.
Okay, very good. Does anybody have any questions on this? Something we do every year. And that's what they were able to dispose of.
We had, we had some challenges through those times and we were able to compensate for it. Darrell did an excellent job. Courtney did an excellent job in keeping us running and keeping people warm. So, I want to commend both of you on the job you did and it was outstanding.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, I just wanted to add one thing. We weren't able to attend the dinner for the promotion of the three firefighters to their positions as lieutenant that took effect on January 15th. So, I just wanted to say publicly, congratulations to them. And I really do hope that you get it rescheduled because I'd love to come and join you all. So, I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
They're going to reschedule, I think. Okay. So, okay. Next, we'll move on to resolutions. Councilman Washington, would you read number Resolution 3519-24? That's one we do every year from the police department.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 3519-24, local record disposition, a resolution authorizing the destruction of the city records that, that have met the retention requirements in accordance with the RSM, RSMO, Chapter 109 and the applicable state retention schedule. I make a, I make a motion to adopt Resolution number 3519-24 at this council meeting tonight.
Second.
Okay, very good. Does anybody have any questions on this? Something we do every year. And that's what they were able to dispose of, as you see by the state. So, all in favor of that motion or say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Very good. Thank you. Now, we'll have Resolution number 3520-24, and that's the financial statement audit agreement. Councilman Henchy, would you read that for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 3520-24, 2023 Financial Statement Audit Agreement. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to sign all necessary documents in relation to the agreement with Williams Keeper LLC of Columbia, Missouri to provide the 2023 Financial Statement Audit and Related Services and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution number two, or 3520-24 at this council meeting.
Thank you. We've had a motion and second to adopt Resolution 3520-24. Williams Keepers has done our audit for many, many years and they were the only ones that actually submitted a proposal. So, that's why it's accepted. Any questions on that?
I just got a question. How long does it take to do this audit? I was reading the letter on it and it's very, it's very extensive.
Our first meeting will be Thursday with them and then they will be performing the audit, various factors with Dustin over the next few months. Then it will be very, very involved come April and May and you guys will get the final product in June.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of adopting Resolution 3520-24 at tonight's meeting? Say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Next, we've got Resolution 3521-24, and this is the revised agreement with the fire department, or the fire union, actually. This, this is something that probably should have been done five years ago. The police department did this back probably in 2012, 20, a long time ago because we couldn't get people. When we opened that up and we started getting people from Jeff City in Columbia that didn't want to move here. So, and we had, at that time, we had a larger little, the sheriff's department increased in numbers, so we had plenty of backup. And I think now we've got agreements with fire departments all around us for, for help if we need it. So, I, I think this is long, long overdue. Councilwoman Seibacher, would you read that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 3521-24, the IAFF 2945 Agreement Amendment. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to sign all necessary documents needed to amend the existing agreement with the Fulton Professional Firefighters Local 2945 and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution number 3521-24 at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Okay, do we have any questions?
I do.
We have the President and the Chief here.
Yes, hi. Thank you for coming. So, have you had people outside of that mileage requirement reach out that are interested?
We have interviewed a couple.
Okay.
That were qualified. They was just outside the mileage and we had to pass them up. We have reached out to them since talking about the amendment.
Sure.
And they're still available. And they said that they would like to come to work for us if we can get these contracts.
I love that. How many positions do you have open right now?
We just hired one today and we have three more.
Three additional.
So, yeah, we've been down four for an extended period of time, which is causing problems with everyday staffing. It's putting us out the door, four people, most of the time on a structured fire or any call. We're down to four people instead of when we have full staff, a lot of times we're five or six.
And you don't feel that this, I guess, let me rephrase. There's not going to be a limit on that mileage. I mean, obviously, it's going to be within reason. We don't want someone 200 miles away. But, you feel that this removal is going to have a better impact despite the response time being potentially a bit longer?
Yes, I think we will get a lot more qualified applicants, we're hoping. And we're hoping once they get, working with Fulton Fire Department family, that they'll go ahead and move to our beautiful city.
Absolutely. I'm excited. I love it and I think it's a great idea and I echo what Mayor Meyer said, we should have done this a long time ago. So, I'm happy for you guys. Keep us posted on how that goes. Bring the new people in too.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would just like to say thank you to the chief. Thank you very much to you, Joey, and your team as well. There was a lot of discussion that went into this. We're all very much in support of it and I'm excited to see it move forward and maybe get some phone calls out there tomorrow, fill some positions if this goes forward. So, thank you all very much for all the time that you put into it and the wonderful discussion to get us to this point.
Thank you for your support.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, Bill number 1704, the surplus property down on First Street. Councilman Luther, would you read that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1704, surplus property, 405 East First Street. An ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to declare tract of land located at 405 East First Street in Fulton, Missouri to be surplus property, authorizing its distribution and establishing an effective date. Make a motion to place Bill number 1704 for second reading at the next regularly scheduled counseling.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have discussion, any discussion on this? I think you're going to see some more of these individual properties coming up for surplus. We've got so many of these lots around town and we need to, to get rid of them. They, they're nothing but costing us money. And we have to mow them, we have liability on them. We're going to start trying to get rid of some of those.
Yeah, you guys will probably see some individual ordinances coming your way, but you might also see an ordinance with a lot of properties on it. As the mayor mentioned, we have liability and a lot of work that goes into these and there's a lot of opportunity for us to put some parcels out there so we can get some new structures built as well. So, this is one, but anticipate that you'll be seeing quite a few coming your way in the future.
And these surplus lands can go into residential for, for people to build their own homes and things like that?
Sure, absolutely. It depends on what the current zoning is. And obviously, if it's not zoned for the need of, of the purchaser, that's a consideration they would need to make and go through the zoning process. Yep.
Just for us and for those viewing, you speak of the bidding process. Can you describe that for those of us that may be interested in bidding?
Absolutely. So, the city of Fulton's purchasing and bidding procedures follow the state statute requirements as well. So, what will happen is, once this is authorized, this parcel can technically be put out for bid or put out on a list of properties that we have available. So, we can go about it a couple of different ways. It might just be that this property is put out on a list of available properties and we will take offers. I do know we have an interested party for this one. So, just to make sure that everything is handled fairly and transparently, we will be putting this specific property out for the public to bid on and collecting bids, which Kathy's office will then open up publicly as well. So, it really depends. Just because we say that something might go out for bid doesn't mean every single little tract we're going to put out. But, in this instance, I know we, like I said, we have some interested parties, so it will go through the formal bidding process.
Do you access the website? What's the formal bidding process?
Yes, so it's out on our website. You'll see individual bid numbers, which is under the Finance Department. And that information will be there. Jason, our purchasing agent, will also put everything out in the newspaper and we try to make sure that we get that out there where people will be looking for it. So, definitely check our website under the form, I'm sorry, under the Finance Department. And probably, we have another two readings on this, but probably within a week or two after it's completed, you guys will see that out there on the website.
I know Kyle and his staff is working on getting together these lots that we have scattered everywhere. And I'll be quite honest, sometimes we don't even know we own a lot until the neighbor calls and says, "Your grass on your lot is waist-high and nobody's mowed it." So, we determine, oh, that is ours. So, we're trying to get all those together and like Courtney said, in close proximity, we'll probably have three or four together to sell the whole thing. So...
I would add to one other thing we're looking at, just to go ahead and put it out there. You know, if we do have properties that we think a developer might be interested in, we might create a package for them and then put that out to bid. So, that way, even if they're not necessarily in close proximity, a developer can come in and determine if they want to purchase those properties and put up single-family residences or, again, depending on what the zoning looks like, they might find it more advantageous to purchase a grouping of properties.
Okay, we have a motion and second for Bill number 1704. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Okay, we have a second reading on our, on the TAP grant. Councilman Stone, would you read that for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1703, TAP Grant Federal Project Number TAP 2700-512, Nichols Street. An ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to execute all necessary documents in relation to the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Alternatives Program Agreement regarding federal project number TAP 2700-512 and establishing an effective date. I make a motion for Bill number 1703 for third reading at tonight's meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and second. And I think we've discussed this. If everybody, does anybody have any questions on it? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Very good. Councilman, you can read that again.
Bill number 1703, TAP Grant Federal Project Number TAP 2700-512, Nichols Street. An ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri to execute all necessary documents in relation to the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission Transportation Alternatives Program Agreement regarding federal project number TAP 2700-512 and establishing an effective date. I make a motion for Bill number 1703 for final reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of Bill 1703, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk, would you call roll, call vote, vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Henchy?
Yes.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Rick Lou?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Combs? Seven members affirmative.
Thank you. Okay, we're down to announcements. You want to, do the announcements?
Sure, absolutely. City Hall, Legends, Recplex and the Solid Waste Department will be closed on Monday, February 12th, and then again on Monday, February 19th in observance of Lincoln's birthday and President's Day. And the next city council meeting will be Tuesday, February 13th at 7:00 PM. A work session will begin at 6:30 PM. And for that work session, we're going to be going over utilities. So, Darrell will be walking us through that. Lastly, I just want to echo all the wonderful things that you all have said. Thank you so much to our road crews and to our staff. We had some gnarly weather that we went through there, but, you know, you guys make us look good and you make sure we're taken care of. I also want to say thank you to the citizens for being very patient and understanding as we were navigating that. And specifically yesterday, our weather, thank you for staying home and off the roads and for being safe. As Councilman Luther indicated, safety is incredibly important and that extends to our citizens, certainly. I also want to thank our citizens for helping us conserve energy during high-cost times. So, City Hall, we lowered our temperatures and really restricted our usage as well. If we're going to ask our community to do it, we're going to lead by example and we certainly did that. So, thank you all very much, staff. Thank you guys very much for taking good care of us and making sure that we could all get around our city safely. So, that's it for me. Thank you.
Courtney, I have to add, my son works at the Recplex and he went the first day after you had put that information out and came home and he says, "Mom, it was freezing in there." So, the next day, he dressed more appropriately and was much better. But, it was definitely noticeable and I agree, leading by example is really the only way that we can, we can ask our citizens to do anything. So, they did do it. So, good job to the department heads and our leadership team. And just a funny little quip for you there from my kiddo. He was, he was crabby. But, he did fine. Thank you.
We had, we had some people with blankets on. It was, it was cold. And I want to thank Jeremy personally for the outstanding job he did during that time, making sure the thermostats were down. And he, he came in and checked, checked his heat and then made sure that everything was running properly. I know he worked that weekend as well as Darrell and his staff did. Did a great job in keeping, it was close to critical time and we, we all worked together and went through the cold and we made it. So, I want to thank, thank all of you. I got it one morning and my bedroom was 60 degrees and I thought, "That's a little chilly." Okay, do we have anything else? Anybody?
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you.